Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Please be kind enough to introduce yourself, starting off with you Doug.
Doug Mental Town Planner.
Mark Francois, member.
Dave Tivignan, member.
Ryan DeChamps, member.
Mark Cenarizio, member.
Raquelis, member.
With that, this meeting is being taped for general bylaws. With that, we'll turn it over to you Doug.
So first of all, we have a discussion. Pretty much, a planning board vote to adopt, match general law forty-four fifty-three G and a half. This is pretty much allowed the planning board to collect securities for things like visual barriers, like we've been doing for solar fields. This would go into the subdivision rules and regulations. Town council draft language for it, I think it's pretty straightforward and would be useful for the planning board.
Gentlemen, any other point of discussion?
I just want to say, for sending that stuff out via email, it's much easier to be able to get a chance to review the stuff ahead of time before we go into the meeting.
Yes, sir.
And rather than trying to figure it out on the fly.
That's why we hired Doug, he makes the big bucks, maybe Adam already is one of these guys.
I'm putting in my plug to keep him employed, okay? I did read it, I mean, the recommendation of town council is that we adopt the wording that they provided so that we can collect surety and use it if we need to, to finish up a project, if such a thing is necessary. One thing that did surprise me, and it came from the lawyer, so it's okay, is that if we have to use the surety to finish the project, if there's anything left over, the town keeps it.
Can we put an amendment on there that you get to keep that?
No, no, no. I think that's how it works.
That was, I didn't realize that that was even an option. I would make a motion that we accept the document as written by town council to allow us to accept and distribute sureties for special permits.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, now, does that adopt both documents now? The general law and the wording that the town council came up with?
Pretty much, the wording would be for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And before I forget, I just wanted to introduce Paul, he is our part-time secretary. Thank you for what you're doing, I didn't introduce you in the beginning.
Thank you.
Continuing on with you Doug?
Yes, so we have, for second discussion, in our format plan access requirements suggested by Rick. I don't know if you'd like to speak a little bit on that.
I can do it now, or I can do it at the end of the meeting, whichever is, works better. We've got a number of things that we need to get through, we can get through those first.
Yeah, let's move it to...
Then move it to the end.
Well, we'll move the next two towards the end, then we can go into discussion, season desist, issue for ground mounted solar array eighty-eight wind land.
Do we have anyone in the audience from way back? Please, I guess. Do we have a microphone over here at all? It might be up above. Don't worry, you can just speak.
I'll try to speak as I can.
With that Doug, would you like to get on that, or would you like?
Yeah, no, I think it'll be pretty straightforward. I spoke with town council on this before the meeting today. So we have to keep the stormwater issues and what the planning board issues are completely separate. Only person who has authority to issue the season desist was in the building commissioner. I sent a letter to the building commissioner, it wasn't sent out to CV North America. That being said, the season desist wouldn't be effective. In terms of storm, like I said, stormwater issues have to be completely dropped, otherwise. Pretty much what the planning board has as an option is the waiver request that they came in for the plantings, and then accepting the cash surety for the five-year lifespan of the plantings as well, and the visual barrier.
So the challenge is, they still don't get the season desist released yet till they finish everything?
Well, no, it's not even effective because the building commissioner is the only one that could issue it.
Okay, so that's an issue at this point?
Yep, it would just be a vote to accept the cash surety and accept the waiver request for the visual barrier.
Okay. Is town accountant okay with the form of the surety?
I haven't asked, but I believe that everything should be fine, working with a new town administrator.
Okay, we enacted what we needed to enact so that we can administer funds from that, or...
Yes.
Or not, as the case may be.
Yes.
What waivers are they requesting?
I guess I'll let them speak on their behalf.
Good evening gentlemen.
Please be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir, so people on TV can know who you are.
My name is Worcester Dizir, and I'm a construction project manager for CV North America.
Eric James, project manager with CS Energy, we're the EPC contractor for the project.
Yes. In our last meeting, gentlemen, it's a pleasure to see you guys again, although it could be under different circumstances, but still good to see you, gentlemen. In the last meeting, the recommendation from the board was for us to present a new version or a new layout of what we've done at the site versus what was planned originally. We have it here, and then we had shared with Doug, I don't know if you gentlemen had a chance to visit it. So basically, what we did was, we planted two-hundred-and-seventy-seven trees all around the site. They're a little bit different than what was originally planned, and they will take a little bit longer to provide the visual barrier that's required. So what we've done, in the meantime, is erected, we erected a top fence that we applied on all the fencing, and also with some slats on the building property, to provide full visual barrier to the site. That should last at least five years. And in addition to that, we posted the shu- shu- bond that we presented to you that we're going to post. So in case that visual barrier either falls or the trees don't take, then we replace them. So within five years, we will have complete, we'll always have complete visual barrier to the site. And we just ask for the board to accept that as a temporary solution until the trees grow, or that we have to replace them if they don't grow. That's the change from the plan.
Are you satisfied with the plantings that they've provided? Or have you not had a chance to review?
I got them last night, so I haven't really had a chance to thoroughly review it. But, I mean, I've been out to the site, so I'm familiar with what's been done. They have done a lot to remediate the issue. I mean, they are posting a significant amount in terms of the cash surety if anything is to happen over the five years.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is there any plans to add any more trees to the site now?
Not currently.
No, the recommendation is based on what we've planted. We want to give at least one full season for the trees to grow, to see how they look. And if for some reason, we don't feel like they will provide that full visual barrier, then we will consider either planting more or replacing them. But right now, it doesn't make sense to go do it, especially because of the season, where we are in the season, and then we just haven't proven that they're not going to work. We had, this plan was, we had consulted a botanist that actually came up with the whole way we should do it, and basically, we believe it will provide the requirement of the visual barrier. But at the same time, it's too early to be able to guarantee that will happen. And that's for that reason, we have the temporary solution. And then if within a year, within six months, we realize those trees are dying, we'll just replace them.
I was out at the site today, and again, I'm new here, but some of the trees are this big, some of the trees are three feet, and there are some that are as far apart as mere the fly. Even in a year, it might, it's not going to, I mean, in my opinion, in a year, those trees aren't going to create a visual barrier. I mean, they have the sureties in, so we can, I guess, turn around.
We understand that, and even if we had gone with the original plan, right at this time, because we planted those trees back in September, they still wouldn't be providing that visual barrier at this time, even if we had gone with the original plan that was approved by the board. So in other words, it's very early to say that, right now, they should be providing visual barrier, complete visual barrier. But we guarantee that that visual barrier will always be there, either with what we provide, with what we have in place right now for five years, or we will just replace the trees, plant bigger trees, whatever needs to be done.
When you say trees, some of them look like tiny bushes.
Some are small. The azote does, so the layout here will identify every species and where they are specifically on the perimeter. And there's a second sheet of the azote here, or twisted az, which shows a detail on the trees as well.
From the last meeting, as you required, you wanted to see what's on site. We engaged an engineering firm, they did an aerial topography to fully survey the whole site, and we accounted for every tree, the type of tree, the height, the current height, the distance between them. It's all described in the document that we supplied to Doug yesterday. So in other words, yes, we realize some of the trees, either they're going to die, they're not going to take, or it's going to take time to grow, we realize that. We're not promising that this all is going to be perfect, but that's why we guaranteeing that if it's not, we're going to correct it.
What kind of growth are we talking about? I mean, some of these trees, literally, they look like nothing.
Well, our provides, average, are like five point five.
I guess my question is, in five years, what are you telling me it's going to look like?
Well, we're not sure, and that's why the surety is in place, and that's why the temporary screening is in place. So if in five years, the trees do not do what they're supposed to do, and the visual barrier is no longer there, it will be maintained, that's part of the surety, then they will be replaced at an appropriate size to...
Let's say we go through this full season, the spring comes around, the summer comes around, and we notice, because some of them are already forfeit and they're growing, so I assume they'll continue to grow.
The arborites are a known commodity, they'll grow a foot a year once they group, but...
The ones that are not, we'll just replace them. Maybe we'll make the whole site...
I understand what you keep saying, but I'm not on board with it myself, because when you have a little bush like this, I mean, I planted a whole island in front of my house when I built my house. It took ten years before it flourished to a point where it was screening. And we're starting at, literally, ground zero, a foot off the ground, a foot and a half. I just don't see how we're going to get any, when the screening falls apart in three to five years, that's the lifetime, right?
Five years, yeah. Approximately five years.
I saw literature that said three years, and you shred it.
Well, it'll be replaced from sure.
But you'll replace, okay. In five years, now these literally eighteen inches bushes are now three-foot bushes. How is that going to screen, how's that going to screen the solar farm for those residences that have to drive by?
We understand, and if that doesn't happen, then we'll do adult trees.
Why don't we just place down this spring with the proper size per the plan? I asked you this twice already, to different meetings. Why not just live up to the plan in the spring?
Because the plan was changed by the building commissioner, and that was not conveyed to the planning board. That's part of this whole deal.
When it wasn't approved by the board.
Okay.
You guys freelance, without coming back to the board.
Can we at least wait until, by the spring and summer, to kind of evaluate if these things are dying?
I agree that the time of the year is not appropriate. But what I've yet to hear from you, three months in a row now, is, we'll replace them when we feel like it, more or less, I mean, no commitment to doing it in the spring, that's my problem.
So you would like us to do it in the spring? We don't want to give it a full season to just see how they grow, because...
They're not the adequate height.
Because the consultant that is a professional botanist that helped us determine what type of trees to put in. So we trust that if he thinks they're going to grow, that they're going to grow. If they don't, then we will replace them. I just don't want to commit that we're going to replace them in approval when we've only planted them six months ago. At least give them like a full...
So you're calling the trees, I'm going to call shrubs. You're saying that they're going to grow two feet a year?
I'm not a scientist, I'm not a botanist, I can't say, yes, I guarantee they're going to. But what we can do is, I can trust that this judgment that they're going to, and if they don't, what I can guarantee is that we're going to replace them.
Let me ask this, the main reason you gentlemen are here is you want the season desist taken off so you can turn the power on to the solar, no?
There isn't one, if anything, it comes up with stormwater, and deals with that. It's a separate issue from the planning board at this point.
So we have nothing to do with the season desist?
Pretty much, nope. Nope, at this point, what the planning board can either vote on is either accept the cash surety and the waiver request, or not accept it and require them to do what was approved in the plan.
Okay, continue, I just wanted to ask.
I mean, accepting the cash surety is an overrated, why wouldn't we? I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, you know, it's an impressive document. I just, I can't grasp, unless I see a letter from your landscape architect, botanist, that says, in five years, this screening should, if they stay healthy, provide a seven-foot-tall screening around, you know, the inside of that fence, so nobody will see the panels. We know our, if you did exactly, they're not even evergreens. The pictures you gave us, they look like just trees with no leaves on them. So that means in the winter time, there's no screening? I mean, I'm just beside myself in what I'm hearing, what I see out in the field, and I know the end result. It's just clear as day to me. So I just, I don't understand how, I couldn't vote for a waiver? I mean, the plan is the plan. I don't really care what the building inspector told you. We're not telling him what to do, he can't, he shouldn't be telling the planning board what to do. That's my take on it, so.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Please feel free.
I guess my only question would be, is the document that they're providing strong enough that it not only covers plants not growing, but does it give us the ability to evaluate whether the screen is sufficient at the end of five years?
Yes.
And if we determine that it's not sufficient, we can request that they improve the screening or use the surety to put additional plantings in there. Just give me a moment.
Yeah, so a sixty-day notice would have to be sent out to CV or the current owners of the solar field at that time, notifying them that either to fix the problem at the site, or the cash surety will be utilized at that time to fix the issue.
So the motion is, do we grant the waiver? We got to do two motions or one motion?
Uh, two motions.
Waiver with the surety, but just one for the waiver or one for the surety?
Uh, one for the waiver, and then one for the surety, and then I have the surety to be signed.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the surety.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously accepted for this surety. Is there a motion to, what are we accepting, this new cleaning thing, replanting?
Uh, the waiver request for azote and for eighty-eight wind land.
Now, on that plan, does it spell out sizes of the plantings?
Average height.
And does it agree with what's actually been done out there?
It does, I can read you the averages on before.
Does it say like one-foot-high arborites?
Well, it's five-point-seven-five average on the arborites, because they are the taller of the trees, and that's accurate. So they did an actual elevation on every single tree.
Is it going to be five-foot-two, actually?
That's all right, now, no.
You can put it up on that easel, sir, if it's easier for you, or the camera will see it on the camera.
Sorry, we should have got a hard bag.
Here, we can... It's fine, it's no problem. This way Eric can get a picture of it, we can see everything if he wants to blow it up a little bit.
Sure.
The way we have them planted right now is, they are in a zigzag pattern as such, where the ones in the front are the taller ones, that are on average five-twenty-five, five-foot-five, five-foot-seventy-five. And then the smaller ones that, gentlemen, I'm sorry, I forgot the name, they are in the back, and they are really small, they are between one foot to two foot there.
What's the species of the smaller ones?
So there's four total, so there's a green giant, those average five-point-two-five feet. There's a red cedar, those average four feet. There's a holly, and a mountain laurel, and those average one foot each. Those are the smaller ones that you were referencing prior. And this is, you know, the side view of the berm. These species are all identified more specifically on the overlay, because it's tough to do it from this perspective. So if you were to look at the first page, you can see they're identified, each species and where they are. But this is a typical kind of detail of how...
How high is the berm?
The berm's two feet high, and three feet, six feet, three feet, so. Berm's the same height as proposed originally. It's really just the pattern of the trees and the species of the trees.
Is there an actual planting schedule?
There's not an actual planting schedule, like, you mean, like with the plantings?
Yeah, I mean, like thirty-five green giants, so...
Yes, yes.
A hundred-and-fifty-five...
It's not on this plan, we can ask...
Oh, no, it's, uh...
It's printed in this document here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just got this. I do not have it.
It's a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven trees, a hundred-and-thirty-eight of them are the green giant, and then the half is divided between the red cedar, I think it was sixty-one, it's right here, the total, sorry.
Is there something on that plan that says the number of...
Yes.
Yeah, it says the number, it just doesn't add them all together, so you'd have to kind of add them up.
On this plan, it shows on which side, like, for example, on the west side, we have, we have a total of sixty-two green giants, and fifty-one red cedars, and then six mountain laurels and five hollies.
To answer your question, the numbers are on here, but there's not a compiled table.
That's what I'm asking, so if we go out and actually count things...
Correct.
It would match up, it would match up.
And it's also in the document, I'll send it to you.
One of my fears is, once we, or if we approve this tonight, it'll almost be forgotten two years, three years from now. Who's going to be responsible for, unless, in a butter, our neighbor complains, and nobody's going to...
I would hope we could send our planner out and say this, is what they've built, and what they've screened, agree with what they promised, and what goes on this plan, that would be my...
It would be good, yeah.
That would be my hope. I mean, that's one of the reasons to have a planner, is so we've got somebody out there that can review these things and...
Five years is a long time.
Yes, it is.
Well, maybe there should be like a yearly review on all the solar sites in the town.
Yep, no, I actually spoke with Rochester, and kind of like what they have set up over there. They keep a spreadsheet, yep.
Every year.
Just do a review on every one of them.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, this is where we're at.
And also, it's also, I mean, we take responsibility for what we promised, so in other words, if we feel like they're not growing, we're not going to wait five years for you to tell us we plant all. We'll do what we need to do to make sure that it's satisfied. Because we know, one way or the other, five years, we're going to have to have that corrected. So we're not going to wait five years, let them die, and then just all of a sudden, now you're going to tell us what to do. We're just going to be proactive and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do in order to meet the requirements that you imposed.
I mean, I would be amenable to it, with the condition that there be a once-a-year review of the planting and screening, to see if it's performing as promised.
By our planner.
By our planner.
Gentlemen, you're all okay with that? Anything else you'd like to add to what we're doing?
The yearly review makes me more comfortable.
Yeah.
I still...
Gentlemen, you're all okay with that, yearly review?
Yes, sir.
Doug, you're all okay with that? We have to let go for long, you know, two years, three years, you know?
So with that, with the language put in, that Doug will review this on a yearly basis and report back to us? If it doesn't work, we can use the surety, does the surety last only five years? Or can we use it in the first one, two, or three, or four years?
I believe five years, otherwise, if the board feels like it needs to use the cash surety, if things aren't being taken care of by CV, a notice has to be sent out sixty days prior to notify them that either the cash surety is used, or they have to complete something.
So we can actually send that out at any time, if we wanted to.
Yes. So what I understand, I mean, I would have to check with town council on that, just to make sure, obviously, but from what my understanding is, we're reading the documents, that's what we want to do.
Gentlemen?
One quick question.
Go ahead.
Will you gentlemen be around a year from now?
CV...
To come back and see us if we ask you to, or will it be somebody else?
I will be, but it'll be their field.
CV, as a company, we're not just a developer that builds site and sells them. We are owner and operator of our site, so we own those sites hopefully for twenty years. I'm not saying there's not the possibility that those sites could be sold, because businesses change. But as a business, and our business model is to own and operate solar plants. We have nine of them in Massachusetts now, it's just a cushion, and we're going after more. We're going to be in New York, we're going to be in Pennsylvania, so we're going to be around. Me personally, I'm just one person, I can't say if I get some, we don't know where I'll be, if I'll be alive, we don't know. But CV, as a company, that's our promise, that we're in this business for the long term. We're going to be neighbors, we're going to be pursuing more projects in Massachusetts, maybe here in a cushion, so we're going to be around to support our plants, because we cannot just walk away from them. We have to keep them going for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, because that's our business.
And not a lot of solar plants do that.
And we definitely don't want to be on the wrong side of the board, because when we come with the next site, you're not going to allow us to have it. So we have no, we have no reason not to comply with what you want, or what you impose on the plan, or the requirements that you want, because, I mean, we've been here four times. This is not what we want to do as a business. So in other words, this plan was changed because of some valid reason. Unfortunately, maybe it wasn't done the proper way, where the change came all the way to you gentlemen before it was approved. We went with what Mr. Mayor told us we could go to, but unfortunately, it didn't work out. But it's a mistake that we've done everything to correct in the last four months, and we're going to continue to do whatever we can to make sure that you are pleased that we do what we're supposed to do to be a good neighbor.
So gentlemen, with that, those changes made, you are accepted?
I mean, I'm happy with it at this point, I mean, we've accepted the surety.
A yearly review?
Yep.
That we have the opportunity to use the surety in the event that the gentlemen don't do what they said?
Yep.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to it?
And the trees don't grow to height, then we have to use the...
Yeah, I mean, the screening's not working as presented, so we would have the ability to...
The target will be five years from now, that there's something there that's reasonable.
Right, this isn't necessary.
In all honesty, if we, as long as we review it every year?
Yes.
With five years, there will be no surprise in five years.
You're going to know in year three.
That's right. Between two and three years, you'll have a pretty good feel for whether something additional needs to be done.
Exactly.
Are you gentlemen all set with that? Anybody in the audience like to say anything? Well set with that? You could put that together?
Yep. Do you want to just accept the waiver request?
I would make a motion that we accept the plans and their waiver request, subject to the proviso, that there will be a yearly review of the screening to make sure that it complies with what they promised in terms of longevity of the plants, the size of the plants, and spacing of the plants. And if it does not provide sufficient screening, in the opinion of the board, we will give them a sixty-day, the sixty-day notice and go from there.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. With that...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Do you like the terminology?
Uh, no, Doug, actually, I'll keep this, please. Yeah, let me hold on to that, I'm going to need it.
It's a nice color for one part, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen, have a great night. Thank you, gentlemen, have a great night.
Did you sign the cash surety document? Oh, sorry.
With that, Doug, the next one?
Sierra and one sixty-five Nize Lane, public area continuation, solar rain installation, accessories map, eighteen lots, fifty-seven, fifty-seven eight, pushing Massachusetts. The proponent R and R Renewables LLC, represented by Henderson Consulting Services. The plans and the company documentation are available for inspection at Town Clerk's Office, Cardingways Building, one thirty Main Street, first floor. Um, and I believe we have.
I'm Roy Morrison, and I'm, I'm just gonna make a few remarks, and then turn it over to the engineers and landscape architect. The last meeting.
If you could just speak up a little bit, sir.
At the last meeting, concern was raised that the screen, plant screening was not tall enough, or insufficient, and we agreed we would say we, we would use a berm, and then a full-foot berm, and then six-foot trees. I subsequently learned, when talking to the, uh, the engineers and the landscape architect, that, that putting a berm in would, would completely mess up the stormwater, uh, systems. So instead, what we decided to do is, instead of planting six-foot trees, we would plant ten to twelve-foot trees. And, uh, these are, they're older trees, they start out broader, and by planting them on grade properly, they're much more likely to survive and to thrive, and present a, a good screen from day one. So the plan is to plant them in the spring, if we're able to move forward in the spring, and immediately have an effective screening. So I'd like to introduce the, who wants to go first?
I'll go. Uh, for the record, my name's Scott Henderson, I'm Henderson Consulting, a project civil engineer, focused primarily on preparing the site plan, uh, and the drainage, for working through the stormwater management permit with Pat Hanlon of the Conservation Commission. We've had that peer review with S W Cole. Uh, I was not present at the prior, uh, planning board hearing, where the discussion about the berm, uh, and the screening, um, that was brought to my attention after, and they asked a fair question, will that have an impact on the drainage? In fact, it would, um, I'll just explain a little bit. The majority of the site, uh, or the entirety of the site, rather, drains from west to east. Uh, in general, from the planned top-left corner here, to the, the back-right corner. Uh, our drainage, uh, is designed to capture runoff, uh, and limited swales from the new access road, uh, in two separate stormwater basins. Uh, the screening is intended to be located primarily on, uh, the west side, to block, uh, the visual screen from Nize Lane, as you know, uh, and along the south. The concern is that with all the, the sheet flow and runoff through the field, uh, on the site now, running to the back corner, if we introduce a berm, uh, that's gonna dam the water as it flows this direction, uh, directed down to the south, and then concentrate that flow along the south property line. It will then continue, uh, to where it goes now. But instead of having that sheet flow, that allows water to flow slowly, you know, to shower in depth and infiltrate better, if you concentrate that into a channel, you get erosion potential, you get less infiltration, ultimately more runoff leaving the site. Uh, so, all things equal, rather than, uh, introduce a berm, which has topographic drainage impacts, uh, and shorter plantings on top of that berm, you can make up the same screening buffer with strictly plantings, and leave the ground surface untouched. Uh, we wind up with a better drainage situation. So, it's sort of the, the short version of, um, sort of what we discussed. Uh, Outback Engineering did prepare, uh, the, the landscape plan and musher that's changed significantly since the last hearing. Obviously, I think that the plantings now are taller than they were before, but if you wanna go through.
I believe you did one of the white irons, moved that, and put a low weight truce in it. But basically, it's the same spacing, just with larger trees.
So instead of six-foot trees, you go onto ten or twelve-foot trees?
Ten to twelve-foot trees, yeah.
Now, if you put a berm on the, on the south side of the southernmost group of arrays, would that affect your drainage? I don't remember now whether there was a berm proposed on that southerly side of the, uh, south array.
Uh, there's less of an impact in that scenario, as long as the runoff that enters from, uh, the west can continue under the array here, unimpeded, if the, the screening here is sort of burned up by the property line, that's sort of the condition as it is now. Uh, there's a delineation between the properties, a, a stone wall along most of it, you kind of have a berm there now. So, it is, you know, possible to have, uh, I guess, a berm through this section, but if you're gonna just plant taller trees, I think it's, sort of a moot point.
Gentlemen?
I prefer the taller trees. The root system, it'll help the drainage.
Yep.
Do you get instant screen?
Agreed, plus, there won't be any stormwater disadvantages.
No.
And there, there actually is a better chance that they'll survive on grade rather than on a berm. They'll, the moisture will stay on the roots. On, on the berm, the roots tend to dry out.
I think it's gonna, they would need a water range.
Yes. As long as we measure them ten feet.
Well aware of what's just happened.
You heard what happened before, just don't plant six footers and come back and ask for a waiver.
Anybody from the audience like to say anything, we're still here, everybody happy? Fantastic. What do we have to do, Doug?
Um, I have to prepare the documentation for the solar special permit from the planning board pending approval, um, and then the cash surety, and the form that the planning board would, would like to accept. Um, 'cause if you recall from last meeting, uh, discrepancy with the, um, the adjuster to account for the twenty-year time gap, and the difference in, in decommissioning costs at that point. I don't have the documentation with me, I don't know if you have, Roy, do you recall the numbers that S W Cole presented for that?
I don't, I mean, but basically, the, the federal policies was a, like, four-and-a-half percent interest rate for nuclear decommissioning.
Okay.
Syncing funds.
Okay, so I guess at, at the following meeting, we'll just have to have the final, finalization for the, uh, decommissioning number. But otherwise, the special permit should be set, um, all set on our end. The, plan, things are, are good with the board, otherwise, um, I believe, you're all set.
Gentlemen, you all set with the, make a motion to change it from a berm to ten to twelve-foot trees?
I don't think, you never really had the berm on the plan, did you?
There was a berm on the plan.
Was there?
Two-foot berm, I believe so, is that correct?
Your plan had a reference to berm? I never graded it, Daniel, 'cause I'd always intended.
It was just, uh, an agreement at, at the last meeting, and then, when I talked to the engineers, they said, Roy, you're stupid.
Not exactly.
And I said, well, what should we do? And then they said, well, we could plant bigger trees. I said, that's a great idea, because everyone likes bigger trees.
Gentlemen, you all set with bigger trees?
So this now would be the permit set of plans?
Yeah, this, this plan set.
Okay.
At the next meeting, we, uh, we'll have the final set of plans to sign, and then.
Okay.
With the surety, and make sure that it's legal from the town council, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm all set with the, the bigger trees.
All right, so we make that motion?
I think you three, I think you three have to vote on it. I think only you three can vote on it.
Yes.
Because of the lack of meeting, I, I missed the meeting earlier.
Yes, and then Mark wasn't here prior to that.
Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept the opponent's proposal for eliminating the berm and planting the larger trees, as shown on the plans that they're presenting tonight.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rick, Mark, and Brian, David and Mark were not here, so they can't sign it. With that, that is accepted?
Just a quick question, it's a special permit, correct? It's a simple majority requirement, or super?
Uh, majority.
Well, we hoped to give you everybody that was at the meeting, you know, so.
Make sure, I don't want a technicality.
We now have a full board, we have two gentlemen.
It's not a super majority.
No, it's just a simple first.
I think it's.
It was a question, it's just, yeah.
That's a good question.
Can I have a call?
It's simple majority.
Okay, then we got it, no matter what.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so hopefully work out the decommissioning cost, uh, prior to the next meeting, and we can go to final approval on the plans.
Yep, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you to all the trees.
That's a rare.
Okay, all right, whatever you can provide, may the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't I send you that?
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
And continuing on, Doug?
Uh, yes, so discussion for roadway improvement waiver request, Martin Lane and our plan of land, roadway extension. Uh, this was completed by Xenon Consulting Engineers. I guess I'll just speak briefly on it, um, I sent some stuff to the board prior.
All right.
Found that it was expensive to build a roadway.
A little bit, a little bit. So I, I don't know if the board's been out to the site, um, but the existing roadway that's there is pretty decrepit, broken apart. Um, and previously approving the plans is extending the roadway from what was already paved, down to the edge of, of where their lot is. Um, I believe it was a little extensive, after seeing what was out, out at the site. I did put together some, uh, prop, uh, proposition for what could be sufficient for, um, a standard for a gravel roadway, that would be, uh, sufficient for out there. Uh, so it would be a twenty-foot wide gravel way, with, uh, six, uh, inches of graded gravel surface, or six inches of rap, so reclaimed asphalt concrete, um, and then an eight-inch minimum roadway, uh, binding gravel compacted into four inches of lifts. So instead of putting a roadway, I'm just gonna put.
Is, is our.
Rap or gravel?
Um, I, I would leave that to the board's discretion, I think rap would pack down a little bit better. I, I do believe Mark, for instance, will head, head on out to the site.
I, I went out there today, just to take a look at, and, um, the beginning of Martin Lane is, I guess it's rap, it's that, you know, that crushed asphalt, and they put a layer of oil on it, and it's compacted. But it's, it was done over ten years ago, uh, one of the neighbors actually came out, and was wondering what I was doing here. So he came over and was talking to me, and I got a lot of good information from him. Right now, the, it's, he's the one who actually paid to have it, the, the rap put down ten years ago. Prior to that, it was just gravel.
Just ran ego, right?
Right.
Okay.
Nice guy. Uh, so he said he's the one that paid to, to have the rap put in, so prior to that, it was just gravel to begin with. So the town doesn't maintain it, the town doesn't plow it, no mail, no, no trash pickup down that road. For them to have to asphalt it, like a brand-new road, from where it ends to their house.
It's like in the middle of the roadway.
It's, eh, I think it's extremely extensive. Uh, I agree with what Doug has presented, uh, I wouldn't even go as far as, you know, my opinion, uh, having to require rap, um, if, if, if it is only one more house. Now, my main question is, is can that paper road continue? Doug says that because of wetlands or whatnot, that it's not the most feasible thing in the future. So if it's only this one house that's going in, then, in my opinion, as long as it gets, you know, whatever the regulation is of, of, of gravel, and, and graded, uh, gravel, I think it, it would be more than sufficient to just go one more distance.
Right up to the state of the, from the road coming off.
Yeah.
The main road.
Right, yeah, I mean, they get a little bit of rap on there now, but it's, if you look at the pictures, you couldn't even tell that there's rap on there. Um, if they wanted to put, it could, uh, gravel, I think, would be sufficient, in my opinion. Gentlemen?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, I think gravel roads for minimal amount of lots is reasonable, and, um, this is, it's a lot to ask for one lot, that's for sure. I mean, they proposed it, so obviously, the board would take it, but I don't, I think any, any gravel surface, they just stick to the plan on record, just no pavement, gravel instead. And per what Doug said, it's basically town spec road without the pavement, a dense grade on top.
What's the width on that, is that twenty?
Uh, yes, it was presented as twenty.
And that's still, uh, still requested at twenty feet?
Yes.
And what was your, what was your proposed cross-section again?
Uh, six inch of the graded gravel surface, and eight inch, uh, binding gravel, uh, for some grade.
Eight inches of rap?
Unfortunately, that's fourteen inches of gravel.
Essentially, at that point.
It's a little heavy.
Okay. I mean, that should, as long as it, uh, is the free draining gravel, I mean, this is a tough time of year for, for dirt roads, with the, with the freezing and thawing, uh, sometimes the, the earth doesn't hold as well as you would like.
Now, it's just that section on the map, it's not all the way coming off Hathaway Road straight down?
No, I would say it's gonna be the highlighted section right here.
And that other, Mark, when you went out to see that today, that front portion from Hathaway Road down is in shaky condition? Eh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's rap, but there's some potholes already, it's already starting to, it's starting to give, um, it's better than just straight gravel, but it, it, there is some potholes, it's not a, a nice leveled surface by any means. You think we could make them, and just do gravel the whole length, from Hathaway all the way down to the end of that? Yeah. I'm just asking a question. I would probably just, in my opinion, again, I'd probably leave that the way it is with the rap that is, that's there now, um, and continue that gray area that they got there with, with the standards that, that Doug has.
The, the shaded, the dark shaded area?
Yes.
That existing?
Nope, this is what would be, uh, gravled over, and was proposed as pavement prior.
Isn't there supposed to be a hammerhead, though?
Yep, so the hammerhead is right here, and that was proposed as a gravel hammerhead.
Right, okay, I thought I misunderstood you, I thought you were talking about extending it to.
Nope, nope, so.
So we're gonna build it per layout?
Yes, per the layout.
Twenty feet wide.
Just instead of it being paved, it would be gravel.
Yeah. I mean, the cross-section of the plan, um, it's eight inches of gravel, and then four-inch layer of dense crushed stone. So you gotta dense graded layer on eight inches, that's twelve total, and then the pavement was going on top. So we just lit, lift it up, so the fissure surface, it's supposed to be pavement, is a dense grade.
Okay.
Twelve inches?
Okay, that works out well.
Yeah, and the, the cost of dense graded is about the same as the cost of rap, so it's either, either one.
So then four, four inches of graded gravel surface, for the top, top part, I'm gonna understand.
I mean, four inches of rap on the top would be, or dense graded would be preferable.
Okay.
Gentlemen, you all set with that?
Are you, I don't know if you wanna sit, say anything on, on, on the matter.
Nope, that's fine, well.
Well, we certainly appreciate you taking a look at what we see. When we started the project, and we looked at the road that's, we're, we're leading, leading into our property, we were concerned that we were building something that, you know, no one's ever gonna drive on but us, and it was built just as a road as half, as Hathaway Road is built. And what we were coming into is a, a sub-substandard road, um, and it didn't really, it didn't really make sense. And though maybe we should have done a better job in questioning our engineer, as to why he would propose something, um, so elaborate, but shame on us.
Oh, you, you got your, you got your initial approval, so.
That too.
I, I, I understand.
But it didn't make sense.
My, our position, our, what happens here is, it's always just one more lot over what was there before.
Right.
You know, and so this would be three, and then there will be, or very possibly would be another lot. Because that's what happens, I mean, the building commissioner is dealing with that, you know, on all of these small lot, subdivisions on this end of town right now, it's, it's always just one more lot.
Well, we do understand how.
No, I, I do, I do, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you at, at all.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm, I'm saying we understand how stressed the region is for lots that are developable, especially A and R's, you know, right off the frontage. They just don't exist anymore, we're looking at more backlots, and, and more situations like this. But in this particular situation, as Doug had mentioned to you, it is wet, there are wetlands, and there is natural heritage. There are, um, there were two available lots. There are, um, there were two available lots, so just to be full disclosure, there were two available lots just below us off of Martin Lane. One of them was owned also by, as you met Ray, uh, his, his nephew, Rainey's mother, who we purchased our property from, and then Rainey, um, purchased a property just south of us. There's only one real lot left and it's all still very wet. In fact, our lot, we just were able to make the lot that we have developable. Because the wetlands were, are, are on the, the south end of our property as well. And we would never be able to develop that either.
It's a unique wellin, I've never seen a wellin that's a hill like that. It's really, wellins are flat and you try to, you go down there, you look at it, it's all rising, but...
So with that, wait, gentlemen, are you agreeance to-
I, I, I would make a motion that we, we accept the requested change in plan to provide a gravel road, uh, at, at the cross-section that you previously mentioned.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Doug, could you just send us an email of what you want?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll send everything over to you, okay?
Have your great day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Moving right along. Some discussion for the decommissioning review?
Um, I do have the email, so I received decommissioning reviews, um, right before the meeting, right at two o'clock. And Alan sent me an email once he had a chance to review everything. Um, from my understanding, you found everything acceptable. Um, I do believe Jack Curry's on the Zoom call to, to speak kind of on, on, on these four projects, but, um, from, from the work that field engineering came back with, uh, the numbers seem fair. It would just kinda be up to the board at this point, and then I would be able to, to draft the documents and have town council review them as well.
Gentlemen, decommissioning review for ten fifty, excuse me, ten fifty Main Street. Is there a motion to accept the decommissioning fee?
Motion accepted.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two guys can vote on this, cause you weren't here for this one, right? Just the three of us?
It's the three of us here.
Correct. Okay, so the vote was Rick, Mark, and Brian. Excuse me?
Two abstentions, Paul.
Yeah, okay.
Does not take enough?
Decommissioning review for Solar Array ten fifty two Main Street.
Uh, that would be Woodbridge, Woodbridge Renewables.
You went through all these, you're acceptable on these, are these people who accept it? These, they're just waiting for these decommission fees, correct?
Uh, yes, and they've been waiting quite some time for them, so, um, I'm glad we were able to get them in, um, working with field engineering, they made sure they were gonna get them in for, before this meeting, so, so, um, I had a chance to review them before the meeting, I was happy with the numbers that those proposed, um...
Fantastic, so, a motion to accept the decommissioning Solar Array at ten fifty two Main Street. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rick, Mark, and Brian? Yes, two abstentions. Decommission review for Solar Array zero Cushing Lane, map seven lot twenty-six White Bombs Incorporated. Is there a motion to accept the decommissioning review?
I don't have that one. Zero. Good, good work. One, it's almost double.
I would make a motion that we accept a proposed field engineering estimate for the Cushing Solar LLC Solar Project on Cushing Lane.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, Rick, Mark, and Brian. Last but not least, decommission review Solar Array, this is zero Robinson Road?
Yes.
Map seven lot seven, Robinson Road Solar LLC. Is there a motion to accept the decommission?
I mean, a motion to accept?
I don't have that paperwork either.
This is zero Robinson Road and Cushing Lane.
Both the same?
This is this one?
Nope.
Which one you want?
Uh, Robinson Road.
Do you have an actual one, do you need it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I would make a motion that we accept the field engineering estimate of thirty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars in no sense for a decommissioning cost at Robinson Road Cushing Lane, uh, solar project in Cushing.
Zero Robinson Road, okay?
Yeah, does it say that here?
Well, we have it.
Okay, okay, zero Robinson Road.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, Rick, Mark, and Brian. Right there, please interrupt me.
Uh, while we have a second, just like to introduce the town administrator Jamie Kelly that we've, uh, recently brought on Team Cushing it.
Good afternoon, sir.
Or evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to say anything to this wonderful board?
I, I just, uh, wanted to say I'm looking forward to working with you. The planner and I have been working together on some issues and, uh, my door is open. If there's anything you need, please come and see me.
Can we get a raise for Doug?
Uh, right now-
I doubt it.
Right now, I'm just-
Been bending this one around for a long time.
Right now, I'm just trying to figure out where I can get money for the town. And he's gonna help me do that.
Okay, we, we would like to keep our planner around for a while, so.
Yeah, I, I firmly believe in the position, I firmly, uh, as a, a former chair of a planning board in my town, I, uh, value the planner and, uh, will probably work him a lot harder than he thinks he should be worked.
Yeah, I mean, he, he's, that's been a, a point of contention for some number of years here. He is our person that we have to deal with the day-to-day stuff, to meet with the town administrator, to meet with other town, uh, other town officials, so that when we come to the meeting, you know, he's prepped, he knows what your issues are and he can convey those to us. Uh, and it's, it's, uh, more important than, uh, some former town officials have thought.
I really value it, as I said, as a former chair of the planning board in my town and as an attorney who did a lot of land use work, I know the value of a planner.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time, sir.
Thanks for coming in.
No, I just, uh, like to see how boards operate.
Well, we're doing okay for you, been around a little while.
Well, that's a, that's a question that, uh, uh, I find, when the boards ask that question, how, how they're doing, and I hope they're doing well, then they usually are doing well.
Thank you. With that, we'll continue on, planner update?
Um, we did skip over two items at the beginning of the agenda to get to the individuals that were present. Just give me a moment. Uh, so we skipped over the A and R Form A Plan access requirements discussion, um, Rick.
Okay, uh, this is, I'll, I'll try to keep this as reasonable, uh, as possible in length and not wrangle too much. The, the history of access requirements for Form A Plans has been kicked around for decades in the court system. The, the landmark case actually was in Nantucket. There were a number of, a number of lots, I forget now whether it was ten or twenty lots, and they were pork chop lots and they had very meandering paths to get to the quote "frontage access." Uh, and of course, in Nantucket even forty years ago, the land was worth a considerable amount of money. Uh, the, the planning board refused to sign the plan and it went to court. Ultimately, it went to Mass Superior Court. And the court ruled that the, the board did not have to sign the plan because the access to the frontage was illusory, I believe was the court's word. You could not, you physically could not construct a drive from the building portion of the lot down to, uh, the street access, if you will, because there was a cliff in the way. And, and, and that, that was pretty much the landmark, the landmark case. So it was a very extreme situation, uh, but it kinda set the tone for a number of other , uh, court rulings that, that stemmed from that. Uh, later on, there was, and I've got, I apologize, I do not have the case numbers and all that stuff, it was, those, those, that, those memories have, have disappeared with time, but I do remember the, the relevant information. Uh, there was another court case in Massachusetts where the board refused to sign a plan because there were wetlands in, between the building portion of the lot and, and the street. And in that case, the court said that just the mere fact that there were, uh, wetlands present didn't mean that you couldn't construct an access from the street to the building portion of the lot. Then, as our building commissioner aptly pointed out, uh, on the subdivision on, or the, the lording arrangement on Peckham Road, uh, there was another case where the court did in fact rule that, uh, the wetlands in between the, between accessing the frontage that the plan showed and the building portion of the lot would have required the construction of a, a bridge in excess of a half mile long. And the court said that that, that access was not practical and the board did not have to sign the plan. There is another case in federal court where somebody tried to, uh, wanted to put a building on an island, and the proponent claimed that he had access on the Atlantic Ocean, which was a public way, and the, the court, the court threw that one out too. Uh, the, the gist of it is that, uh, and, and there's been probably another ten years of court history, uh, that I'm not so familiar with because I'm not, I don't work in that field anymore, but the, the net result is, is that the board can require, the court, the board can refuse to sign a Form A Plan unless there is bona fide access between the building portion of the lot and the street that they are, um, claiming for frontage. We've had a number of proposals, uh, there are more lots that have major amounts of wetlands in them, um, maybe we haven't looked quite as hard at some of those as we should have, uh, the, certainly the, is, is Jim, is Jim still with us, Jim Merritt?
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, it, I mean, that was, that was one of Jim's points, uh, on the Peckham Road subdivision and not without Merritt, no pun intended. And, and, you know, considering the lots are getting more and more and more marginal, my feeling is that we've, we've gotta kinda step up to, uh, the modern interpretation of, of, of frontage and access relative to Form A lots. How, you know, this wouldn't affect anything that's been previously approved, but it certainly is something, uh, to look at more closely in the future if the board so, so, if the board so desires. It, it gives the board less wiggle room to deal with, I'll call them marginal situations, but, you know, that's the way many boards in, in many of the surrounding towns, and especially in towns like Cohasset and Topsfield and, you know, where lots are extremely valuable. Uh, many of those, many of those boards will not sign Form A Plans unless they can show access to the frontage, from the, from a street frontage to the building portion of the lot. And, uh, that includes constructing common driveways that have, that, that meander over other lots to get to the building portion of the lot. There's court history on that too, uh, certainly over the last ten years. The board does not have to consider a common driveway which needs to be constructed over other lots, uh, as satisfying the frontage requirement for Form A Plans. Um, I will forewarn everybody that with lots being worth what they are, uh, this generally means, uh, the board gets taken to court. You tell somebody they can't have a one hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus lot, uh, because of your interpretation or the, what you believe the proper interpretation of the court's access rulings are, and you may very well, we may see more lawyers at our meetings. So that's something else to be, to be considered also, right, right or wrong. I, unfortunately, uh, with, with the lots becoming more and more marginal, I think it's probably time to, to step up and look a little bit more closely at whether you can access the building portion of the lot from the street via driveway that is exclusively on that lot. That's just, that's all just a bid, you don't expect any?
Well, you'll end up forcing, you'll end up forcing more definitive subdivisions, because when people have big chunks of upland in the back, they have a right to access it, no matter what.
They have a right to access it for one lot, but do they have a right to access it for five lots or ten lots or three lots? Not, not necessarily, I mean, it's-
It's true, but if you took, there's a lot of chunks of land up north Main Street and, and if they're able to get, we'll just throw it out there, three, three or three lots, there's a big chunk of wetland between them. In, in theory, what you're saying is each lot's gonna prove that they can get a driveway to access-
Well, that's, that's definitely the direction the courts have, have, have gone, that you have to, you have to have access from the building portion of your lot across your lot to the frontage that serves the lot, there's no-
But then if there's a common driveway bylaw that allows three lots on a common driveway-
We have that already.
Right, well, that's my point, it, that's in place, you have to take that away in order to put in this other-
No, you don't, as long as you have, if you have three legitimate building lots and you don't wanna build three driveways, you can still come in for, for a common driveway. It ultimately goes to how dense, uh, how densely these marginal areas get developed.
Well, my, my point is, you can't prove, you can't go into a common, ask for a permit, build three driveways across the wetlands that are five thousand square feet, five thousand square feet, five thousand square feet, because the wellin laws don't allow it, and they do allow, they do allow one crossing for a common driveway for the three lots, that's, that's, it's on the books.
Mm-hmm.
So what you'd be forcing people to do is to build a road to get to the back upland and do regular lots and maximize that, and they'll end up with more lots than the retreat lots.
And that, that, and maybe that's the, maybe that's the case, but, I mean, the, the previous situation where we're, we're, we're giving all these waivers to put, you know, dirt driveways to service these hunks of wetland way up, I'm, I'm not sure that that's a good direction to go. I'm not, I'm not saying any of this is cast in stone, I'm just throwing it out there for, for thought at this point. Just, just literally discussion and, uh...
But the conservation's the one that's in charge of allowing somebody to go through a road, it's not us.
Again, there, we've got, unfortunately, we've got two court cases that, that deal with extreme or, or, you know, one situation where you've got one lot and the guy's gotta cross it in one place, and the court says, okay, he's entitled to Form A endorsement. But now there's another lot where the access to the lot is actually from another road, not connected to- not connected to the frontage, through somebody else's property. And the court just said, no, you're, you know, this, this access is illusory and not practical. And the, the goal of the law and the reason for having Form A lots tied to frontage is the assumption is that there is access from that frontage to the building portion of the lot.
What would be wrong if, if somebody could prove under that case, if somebody can prove that they can go through the wetlands and get to their property, and they get a permit for it, and then they instead buy an easement across upland, across somebody else's property, and say, I'm not going to build that. Why bother? Leave the wetlands where they are. What would be wrong with that?
I, I mean, if you can, again, we can, we can, we can ask...
Get a legal easement through upland.
We can ask town council to show us the results of that particular case. But the court clearly ruled that it, you've, you've got to have the physical access between the building portion of the lot and the frontage.
Or you show a permitted plan...
With a half mile long...
Whatever it took, and you showed a permitted plan to build something across the wetland. And then you went, and the guy in the back said, you know what? The access, leave it all woods. I'll, I'll let you, I'll give you a legal easement. What is wrong with that?
We're, we're, we're delving into, we're deeply delving into the court rulings at this point. You know, it all, it all boils, it all boils down to how many marginal lots you want, you want to develop. And, and again...
Well, essentially, that's all that's left. All the good land's gone. Everything's challenging now.
And it's got, it's got nothing to do with your proposal. Nothing at all.
No, I understand that. But my, my view on this, and I don't know all the bylaws, and I don't know all the rules and regs. I don't know all of them. But I do know that people in this town, any town, who own a piece of property, and they pay taxes on that property, a lot of taxes on that property, with the hopes and dreams of someday cashing in, then I feel that the town, instead of preventing that person, if, if, again, if they are, they have the amount of upland, they have the, the right amount of frontage, and they can manage a way with approval of, of CONCOM to get through wetlands to get to their property, we should, as a board, I don't feel we should be hindering that person from getting a lot. We should be helping that person to get a lot.
As, as, as long as it's in line with court rulings on access to building portions of Form A lots, I'm 100% in agreement with you. I mean, I, you know, I've been, I've been around land development now for far too long. And I've seen the, the people that retired, and they bought the extra two lots, and that was their retirement money. And, and that's a tough situation. I've been, I've been, I've been, I've also been in a position of trying to get perks on some of those two lots that these people had basically. That was their retirement package with these two lots. And to have to tell somebody that, sorry, you can't put a system here, you know, you've got a field, and they've paid property taxes on building lots for the last 20 years, that's, that's not a position that's a fun one.
But that's almost out of your hands. It's almost out of your hands because the perk doesn't pass. I mean, there's rules for just about everything. If that perk doesn't pass because the soil is bad, then it's out of your hands, it's out of our hands because the perk didn't pass. But if he has a proper amount of upland, square footage, he has a proper amount of frontage, but if he has a little bit of wetland in front, AKA Mike project, that person who's been paying on that, if CONCOM, who's in charge of wetland, approves the passage, I don't think we should be in a position to say, no.
With that, guys can discuss this later on. If you want to go into executive session for discussion, I have a town meeting.
Well, I may, I may end up, I mean, I may end up requesting an audience with town council to, to just, to just go over, you know, you know, what court rulings have, have done over the last 20 years or so to affect the approval of Form A lots with, I'll call it marginal access to the building portion of the lot. I just, what happened was, and again, this is my own personal thing. I, I, once you start to make, to grant waivers for subdivision roads, there's like no end to it. It just, well, you did it for him, why won't you do it for me? And because the lots are getting so marginal now, I think there needs to be a, a clear path, if you will, pun intended.
Be nice, instead of black and white, the gray.
Yeah, I mean, just, just something that is legal, is enforceable, and is consistent. And I don't think we've got a consistent approach to what happens with all these marginal lots. At, at least in terms of, of, you know, granting, you know, huge number of waivers to allow a gravel road to go into access, to access, you know, three or four, three or four lots.
We can look into that, Doug.
Yeah, I can, I can start talking to town council, but I'll talk to Jamie a little bit more about it, too.
We'll just keep moving on because we've got a few things to do. Discussion, Serpette Annual Assessment for Members, Cities, and Towns for, visiting year 2023. What do we, they need money for us, or?
I'm pretty sure it's a request for, for money for the, like, flat rate fee that they, they, for the town.
I don't think, we don't have anything in the budget, so we have to have the selectmen to get some money.
You can ask who, whose budget does it come out of?
Yeah, it's, so I'll, I will also have to bring this to Jamie and, and talk to him a little bit about it, and then take, take the next steps from there.
Okay. Well, Serpette's good. I mean, we, we've used it a lot of times. We've got a master plan supposed to be coming up in the future. What do you plan to be using them for?
I started conversations already and hopefully scheduling a meeting for next week to go over some, the MVP, the MVP that got completed, and then go over some grant opportunities, opportunities, and what the town may be eligible for, and then what the town could potentially get for master plan grants.
Fantastic.
He's short money, $2,130. I don't have a problem with that.
I don't think you will.
It's your return on a dollar.
That's right.
Okay, planner update.
Okay. So we'll start a solar bylaw. So that, I believe, from conversations with the town administrator, they would like to start preparing to get a, either 90 or 180-day moratorium in place for solar fields until we can prepare a language for a solar bylaw. That would just kind of make everything a little bit more consistent. Wouldn't really run into issues like how we did with land, and then can kind of lay out a process of either if they need to go to Conservation Commission first, or if they need to come see us first, and, and just kind of make it a little bit clearer for developers, and then give us a little bit clearer guidelines and...
I'm all for that.
Okay.
You've got to make that job easier. If there's a bylaw in place, they got to follow.
Uh, this open space residence development, that's just really quick. So Jamie's just kind of taking point on, on that now, working with lawyers and then figuring out what's best for the town. That's also going to get pushed from spring town meeting, potentially fall town meeting. There's just going to be some meetings leading up to it, and I'll keep the board members informed on what's going on with that.
Fantastic.
Bradford Street rezoning, so that's a new one I have.
Bradford Street, where is this from, do you know?
Pembroke Ave.
Pembroke, Pembroke. Oh, wait, down here, that's New Central.
Yes. Which is really brief would be the rezoning of two parcels. It would be the rezoning of 534 and 42, map 15, from the Residential A Zone District to the Residential Village District. So some of the lots that are over there would, this would allow developers to clean up the contamination that are, that a previous junkyard was at the site.
A junkyard and a cushion?
But just doing some of the numbers, I believe this would allow for 10 to 13 additional units or buildable lots in the Residential Village District.
Which one is...
All the way up here in Perry's, right?
Which one is repaved? There's a new road up there.
It's, uh, so it's...
Like built, a new road built?
Yes.
On a right-hand turn.
So if you look on the zoning map, except Bradford Street one, it's the closest lot, so it's the 44, 42, right? 42. So the one that splits 482 and the Residential Village District.
Now, I'm not following. Which one is paved right now? Is it Bradford?
Yes, Bradford.
So Bradford's reconstructed, like, constructed within the layout?
Yes.
But the lots on the north, on 534 and 42, that side of it is...
Is residential.
60,000 Swiffer lots?
Yes.
Oh, that's okay.
Where do we have our wetlands out there?
Uh, it's, from what I looked at on the map, the wetland situation's not that rough in that area. So I believe...
It's got to be more ledge than wetland, right?
That close to the quarry, yes. So from what I understand, the Lombanti Street area, when they were building that house, that's closest to the quarry. They, they had a lot of ledge. James Street, which is a little bit further down, I've been working with them a lot of years. That's all ledge over there as well. So it's, it's a pretty dry area. There are some spots that are a little bit wet.
And down in Swiffer lots?
Yes.
It makes sense. Is that some, is that an article somebody's bringing before, or?
Uh, no, this is...
Something you're looking to do?
Yeah, my suggestions to the planning board, and then if they would like me to do further work on it, I would happily do.
Yeah, I mean, if water and sewer is available there, I mean, there's, there's any place that we want to have high-density housing and cushion, if that's, that's it.
Okay.
Wonderful. You going to make a motion to continue going with that, or what do you want, gentlemen?
Uh, well, we're going to have to start, I'll have to set dates for public hearing, so it's going to take two weeks for me to advertise it, so I can post advertising. What would work better, Tuesday or Thursday for you guys, so?
Oh, you're shooting to make this for the spring?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I posted Tuesday, I would be able to hold the public hearing March 8th.
Gentlemen?
Can you do a Zoom?
Yes.
To make it easy?
Um, we can do like a hybrid, so those who can come can come, and those who can't, yeah.
What, what date?
Uh, so March 8th or, uh, March 10th.
What day, what day is that?
Uh, it's either Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay, so the 10th would be the Thursday?
Yes.
I mean, I'd rather do a Thursday.
What time do you talk up on?
Uh, 6:30 usually works well for all of you, right? Uh, 6, 6, 5:30. I'm okay with doing it earlier. It's just, if that works out with everybody.
We do it out of our office, or you got to come down here?
Uh, if it's a public hearing...
I mean, we're certainly going to have to be here. It's a, it's a public hearing on zoning change, so...
Yep.
And a Zoom on top of that.
So, and I also have to bring this in front of the board of selection, so I will be doing that relatively soon.
Okay. Gentlemen, you happy with that? Make a motion, we continue on for Bradford Street rezoning on the 10th at 6, 6:30. Or we can just continue at 6:30?
6:30 actually works a lot better for me, yeah.
Next two of us. Okay with you guys? Here in this room?
Yep.
Yes.
Here.
Doug will let us know, right?
Absolutely. We'll all get an email prior.
And hopefully, last but least...
All right, we got mail, we're meeting minutes.
I don't know the minutes. Gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to read the minutes for August 19th, January 20th, and January 26th? Have you gentlemen had the opportunity, I guess, August 19th?
August 19th, are you three?
Yep. Is there a motion? Accept the minutes for August 19th, 2021?
I want to make a motion to accept the minutes for August 19th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mark, Rick, and Brian. Acceptance for January 20, 2022. You guys hear that? No?
Yes.
Mark, Mark Duff wasn't...
Yeah, I read it. I actually had a couple of comments that were changed.
Yep.
And he has, uh, those, those have been completed. So set with those? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from January...
January 20th?
January 20th.
2022. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. David, Brian, Mark, and Rick. And the next one is January 26th, 2022. So a motion to accept the minutes, special public hearing meeting via Zoom. I guess we were all at that one, correct?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from January 26th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Rick, Mark, Brian, David, and Mark. With that, if you'd be kind enough, gentlemen, to pass these down to Doug.
Next meeting date?
Next meeting date will be March 20, well, the next one will be March 10th for that public hearing, and there'll be another meeting, regular meeting, on March 24th at 6:30. Be honest. Okay with you guys?
Yeah, fine.
Gentlemen, anything else you'd like to say to the people out in TV land?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen.